Good evening, everyone. Today is January 3rd, 2023, and this is the first regular meeting of Moscow's City Council, featuring our newest council member, Drew Davis, down on the end. So this is his more or less first go at this auspicious occasion. So at this time, would you rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good stuff. I have a small amendment to the agenda tonight. We have a proclamation for the National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, and this is a really good council meeting to be having this one because I think, given recent events, we all appreciate what our local law enforcement folks have been doing and what they've done and accomplished. So this is for the National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. Whereas National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day was founded in 2015 by Concerns of Police Survivors, COPS, to recognize officers across the country for the daily sacrifices they make for their communities; and whereas COPS provides a national support network for families and coworkers who have lost a loved one in the line of duty and supports positive recognition of officers doing good work every day; and whereas officers are rarely recognized for the difficult and positive work that they do and the difficult decisions they have to make each day in the best interest of the law and the communities that they serve; and whereas Moscow Police Department's commitment to community policing helps to proactively educate and provide public safety resources for more than 25,000 residents, along with thousands of university students; and whereas we appreciate the extraordinary efforts and sacrifices made by officers and their family members on a daily basis in order to protect our schools, workplaces, roadways, and homes; and whereas the well-being of the city of Moscow residents is preserved and enhanced as a direct result of the vigilance of these officers, now therefore I, Arthur Betke, Mayor of the City of Moscow, do hereby proclaim the 9th day of January, 2023, as the National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day within the city of Moscow and encourage our citizens to recognize the commitment and contributions of our community's peacekeepers and to take the time to show appreciation for the sacrifice our officers make while protecting our community. And by coincidence, and good luck, we have members of the law enforcement community with them. So please come up.
Night's a Monday, right?
Stay in my chair first.
Monday?
Good for the presentation.
January 9th is Monday. Oh, you guys always pick my chair.
So that was a fortuitous coincidence today. Well done, guys. Next up on the regular agenda is the council organization. Sandra Kelly, our current council president.
Outgoing council president. First meeting of the month. We always have a reorganization of the...
Meeting of the Year.
Meeting of the Year, yes, thank you, not the month. I've already forgotten everything. Of the Year, we have a reorganization meeting, and that took place today at 5:00. And we had some people in attendance today that were here earlier. We appreciate that. And so we want to update everyone on what those, what the new look might be. And so it is my pleasure to say that council president will be Maureen Lafflin. Council vice president will be Gina Trusio. We will go over council committee organization in just a minute, and then we'll tell you about our commissions and committees that councils will be on. But before that, I just want to say it's been a pleasure serving as council president. What a great group of people I've had a chance to work with and, of course, to be a part of the best city in the universe here in Moscow. So thank you for the opportunity. It's been great. So normally, we'd switch seats, but our mayor said, you know, since Gina is not here because she had family obligations, it might just be easier tonight if it's okay with Maureen, if we just stay like this and then we'll...
Please do.
That way, we don't have to shuffle about because I'm klutzy, and that's just always scary if I have to move around mid-time. So to update you on what we have going on this year, as always, we have our Public Works and Finance Committee meeting, and we have our Administrative Committee. And both of those meet on the 2nd and 4th Mondays. And the folks on the Public Works Finance Committee, which will meet at 3:00 PM, are Drew Davis and Julia Parker and myself, Sandra Kelly. And the Administrative Committee, which will meet at 4:00 PM, will be Maureen Lafflin, Haley Lewis, and Gina Trusio. One of the really fun highlights of our meeting is to figure out what commissions we are assigned to because we kind of get to pick. And I love that for some of us, I think, I guess, Maureen and Gina and I, we've had a chance to be on a lot of commissions, and other folks are just starting out or in their second year. So finding out what commissions and learning all about the different parts and how Moscow works, and I love to see where people end up. And so with that, on our Arts Commission, Julia Parker will be the liaison. Building Code Advisory Committee will be Drew Davis. Fair and Affordable Housing will also be Drew Davis. Our Farmers Market Commission will be Maureen Lafflin. The Historic Preservation Commission will be Gina Trusio. The Human Rights Commission will be Haley Lewis. Our Moscow Pathways Commission will also be Haley Lewis. Drew Davis will be on Parks and Recreation. Planning and Zoning goes to Maureen Lafflin. Sustainable Environment Commission, Gina Trusio. Transportation Commission, Julia Parker. And for anyone that's ever been watching and keeping up with commission, you will find and have a little bit of joy in your heart when I say that Gina Trusio will once again be on the Tree Commission, and we can look forward to those great reports.
We just couldn't top her enthusiasm for it.
That's right, that's right. We do have other appointments. Some of those are appointed by the mayor, and others, we as a council know that we have a spot on, and so we try to convince others why we should be on that spot. The first mayor-appointed part is the 1912 Center Facility Committee, and I will, Sandra Kelly will be on that. There is also a 1912 Center Use Committee, which will be Haley Lewis. And if you're wondering what those are, I could tell you now, but I would go and talk to Jenny Kofstra and possibly become members of the Board or Committees yourself on the 1912 Heart of the Arts Board. So I'll leave that to you. If you're curious, go visit with her, and you may well find your place there. The Airport Board, that's mayor-appointed also, that will be John Kimberling. Airport Board Vice Chair will be our very own Mayor Art Betke. SITA, Clearwater Economic Development Association, will once again be Julia Parker. Chamber of Commerce Board Ex officio will be our Mayor Art Betke. Moscow Volunteer Fire Department, myself, Sandra Kelly, as well. I will also serve on the Palouse Vacant and Aquifer Committee. Smart Board Transit will be Haley Lewis. Urban Renewal Agency, the mayor-appointed myself to be on that. And as council president, Maureen Lafflin will also be on that. And then we have the Whitcom Executive Board. What's our police chief? Did I miss anything, Mayor? I usually do.
You got it.
Thank you very much.
So we just need a motion to approve the election of officers and liaison assignments.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion in excess of what we already have? Okay, Haley.
Aye.
Sandra.
Aye.
Maureen.
Aye.
Julia.
Aye.
Drew.
Aye.
So I just want to say that as the vice president, it has been a pleasure to work with Sandra. And as a member of council, it's been an incredibly great privilege to work with her and that we will miss her on leadership, and we appreciate all the efforts that she has put into it and the time and energy.
Thank you very much.
You stole my speech from me. I second that. And as a public service announcement, this means also that openings exist on many of the commissions that were just iterated. And I encourage anybody out there in the public to go online to the city's website under the Commission page and fill out an application for any of the openings that exist among the commissions and send it in, and we'll get those filled up with people who are interested in the topics that these commissions cover. It's all laid out on the city's website under the Commission tab. So please, have a look, see what you think. Okay, moving on. Public comment and response period for the next 15 minutes in three-minute increments. We'll receive comment from the public on any topic that's not currently on the agenda nor pending before Planning and Zoning or the Board of Adjustment. And make sure you say your name and address as you launch in. Victoria.
Victoria Seaver, 121 North Lily, Moscow. So usually when there's a change of guard, we have the opportunity to thank an outgoing member, but Ann was not at a city council meeting, so I would like to go on record thanking her for her service as a counselor. She didn't speak up terribly often, but she sure did her homework. She was very insightful. She caught things, and when she spoke, it was well worth the listen. So I really thank her for her service wherever she is. As a point of history... Japan, I hear.
Still in Boise. I talked to her the other day. Yeah.
As a point of history, Mayor Lambert appointed two members onto council, one being Gina Trusio, to fill in after we lost John Weber. And Jim Boland was also appointed, and I believe that was when Carskallen stepped down. And they both went on to elections and were elected and both have been excellent counselors. Incidentally, might as well mention Art, since he's been around for as long as I have. And I've seen him in Planning and Zoning and his chair and the Urban Renewal Agency Board, which I always attend, and city council meetings, and now he's mayor. So I have absolute confidence in his level-headedness, his understanding of how things work, and his scope of view. So I'm really pleased that you brought forward Drew Davis to the council, who came from Planning and Zoning, which I'm on. Drew's been a great asset there. We're going to miss you. And he's very much an integrative thinker. He's very well-versed in things, sees how they interrelate. He's very easy to work with, and you're certainly capable of filling these shoes. And I'm happy to see you here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria.
Thank you, Victoria. Nicest things anybody's said to me all day.
All right, I brought my glasses, but I'm reading from my phone, so bear with me a little bit. Mayor, council, staff, thanks for letting me talk tonight. My name is Stevie Steely, and I reside at 1450 Mil Road, Moscow, Idaho. The mayor let me know that city staff will be presenting about our contract with Inland North Waste, Moscow Recycling, and those services. I've reached out to city staff to let them know that I'm available to provide information regarding that update to you guys. I would, we do these kind of updates internally to our board, and I assume that this will be much like those updates that we do, which I don't think city staff is apprised to all the information that we hold, much like if the Streets Department or the Water Department was doing an update, they'd go to the people working there and ask them a lot of questions. So I've emailed staff. They have let me know that I can provide any information that I want, but they haven't necessarily asked for any information. So I'll be going, working with Tyler and Tim on trying to provide them with information that I think that you guys should be apprised of. If you ever have any questions about our service, please reach out to me. I know that you guys all have my contact information. Actually, Drew, you don't yet, and I will, I will send it to you because I didn't bring any cars tonight. And we continue working with city staff on two areas for a special increase. As you know, we've been asking the city for a special increase since, I believe, the first half of June. We haven't reached a resolution yet. I don't know, we're just reaching the end of our ties here. We haven't reached a solution on fuel or payroll yet, but I believe we've reached one on totes and metal. So we continue to work through that, but things are more pressing. And I don't know what the next step is if we are not reaching something, but working with Bill and Tyler on what those situations look like. And I have a meeting with the mayor on Friday, so I look forward to that. Thank you for meeting with me. And if any other counselors want to make it, I would love to have more ears than not. Thank you.
You're welcome. Two points of clarification. The meeting's at 11:00 on Friday here in the mayor's office. And also, we'll be receiving the update that Stevie talked about at the meeting on the 17th. So, so there's more specifics on those. Anybody else, please?
My name is Dr. Casey Bolt. I am a resident of Pullman, but I am the new executive director at Sojourners Alliance, located at 627 North Van Buren. I'll be really brief because I just see this as the start of a conversation. I have something here that I don't know if I can distribute. I think I got enough for everyone.
You're awesome.
So that, I'm not going to read it because that'll take too much time, but, but just basically, I'm interested in fair housing and affordable housing. And that is a very brief fax from the State of Idaho, analysis of impediments to fair housing choice, published March 1st. And so just my, my basic question to start this conversation moving forward are where, where the city of Moscow is at on these impediments that are identified generally in the state? And then what, and where we are on action items to address them? And I've already been in contact with Amy Heinrich. And I intended to try to meet with the Fair Housing Commission, but that didn't, isn't going to happen this month, but that'll continue as, as we go forward. So that, that's basically it.
Thank you for the update. Anyone else? Okay. Moving on. The next item up is the approval of the Moscow City Council December 19th, 2022 minutes. Somebody should make a motion.
Oh, I move that we should...
I'm scribbling notes, sorry.
I move that we approve the minutes from December 19th, 2022.
Second.
Sorry.
Sandra. Oh, my goodness. Okay, Drew.
Aye.
Julia.
Aye.
Maureen.
Aye.
Sandra.
Aye.
And Haley.
Aye.
Okay, great. That is passed, too. Okay, next up is the 2023 City Limits Ordinance by not Scott Bontrager, but our very own Cody Riddle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. You probably, most of you are probably used to seeing this same process once a year. It's a routine item that's required by state law that requires taxing districts to file new legal descriptions in a map reflecting any change in our boundary over the course of the last year, and that it's to occur by January 10th of each year. So we bring you the same thing every year. In this case, in this year, the boundary was adjusted in two locations. First, you probably saw this, you saw this fairly recently, Eddington Estates subdivision out along Palouse River Drive, where the boundary was adjusted or city limits expanded by just under 14 acres, 13.75 acres. And then the second property was only an annexation of about 10,000 square feet out at the end of Polk Street on the north side of town. So in total, we did add roughly 14 acres to the city this year, bringing the total to 4,752. This isn't a new land use decision before you this evening. Again, we're simply asking you to formally recognize the boundary as required by state code. And so with that, we are recommending you approve the ordinance this evening, adopting this new boundary. And in doing so, and that you do so under suspension of the rules, requiring three separate readings, and that the ordinance be published or be read by title and published by summary. Thank you.
Any discussion? Julia.
Mr. Riddle, I have a question. And I just was looking at the, the map, and there are the two inholdings within the city of Moscow. So maybe this would be better for, for Scott to answer, but do you, can you explain to me why those two, those two inholdings are there? That's not the right word, but that's what we call them.
Islands, enclaves. Yes. So there are two, we consider to be county islands currently within the city limit boundary. The one on Palouse River Drive was created at the time that the city annexed the Palouse River Drive Ballfield property. And the property owners at that point in time advocated for them to not be annexed, and the council chose not to annex them at that point in time. There were limited city services that would be available. We did not have sanitary sewer extended to that location, and so they requested of the council not to be annexed, and the council chose not to annex them at that point in time. The other small one there, located on the east side of town, was also created during the annexation of the property south of the Troy Highway. Again, similar situation. So it was the, the property south of the cemetery. So we had the cemetery property itself that's directly west of that one, and then Ridgeview First Edition covers to the north and to the east. We, the city annexed the roughly 85 or 90 acres on the south side of the cemetery, south of the Troy Highway, and that created that island. It was a similar situation where the property owner was requested not to be annexed at that time. The city did not have the ability to finish, to furnish water sewer services to that property, and so they requested they not be annexed, and the council chose not to do that at that time as well.
Is the area on the east side, on Palouse River Drive, is that currently a trailer park?
The property that's on the, no. That's, that's a, I think, a little area with two or three single-family homes located on the just, it's kind of just east of the arboretum. The homes, I think, just, but yeah, so you can see that highlighted there. It's on the north side of Palouse River Drive. It's that, yep, right there. And I think there's maybe two or three homes that are in that location.
I think they're like original homesteads, too, if I remember right. They're like the original farmhouses.
Okay, thanks. More curiosity than anything.
Any other discussion or questions? Nobody wants to have the whole thing read?
No. I move that we approve the ordinance, adopting the new boundary under suspension of the rules, requiring three separate readings, and that it be read by title and published by summary.
Second.
Okay. Sandra and Maureen on that one. Okay. Haley.
Aye.
Sandra.
Aye.
Maureen.
Aye.
Julia.
Aye.
Drew.
Aye.
Okay. This is Ordinance 2023-01. An ordinance amending Ordinance Number 2022-01 of the City of Moscow, Idaho, establishing and declaring in this ordinance corporate limits of the city of Moscow, Leitau County, Idaho, in accordance with the provision of the laws of the state of Idaho relating to the establishment of the boundaries and the annexation of adjacent and contiguous territory, providing for the repeal of any other ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, providing a severance and savings clause and for the effective date of this ordinance. There you go.
Thanks, Cody.
Okay, now we come to the more interesting bit, which is the...
That was really interesting.
Well, the...
Compliance.
That was awesome. I was spill-bound.
Or sleeping. Update on Ragnar the Drug Dog. Ryan Snyder and Shane Gunderson. Usual audiovisual.
Yep. They sure do. Hopefully it works.
Yay.
There we go. Cute, cute.
Best-looking police officer ever.
All right, well, thank you guys for having us to give the update. So since, and let me start. My name is Sergeant Shane Gunderson. I was put in charge of putting together the K-9 program, once you guys approved it. That initially started with the selection of a K-9 officer and then a lot of research and policy development with, with MIA, followed by a lot of work with the DEA to get some training, real training drugs here.
Oh, I didn't even think about that. Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah.
Crazy process to have to go through, a lot of hoops to jump through. But Corporal Snyder was selected, like I said, just due to his, his natural ability to learn about anything. And he put a lot of work into the lead-up to the program. We selected Von Lick Kennels, a world-renowned kennel out of Indiana, to pick the dog from. They do a lot of work with, all around the world. And as part of that was a five-week course where he learned, I mean, he had to pick up after the dog, get over there, wash the dog every day. It was a pretty crazy process in and of himself. But as part of that, though, he got to, he bonded with Ragnar. So we have, he's a super-close connection with him, as you can, as you could see from, from that, from him coming in. I'll turn it over to Corporal Snyder here to talk a little bit more about the overdose stuff and the, the drugs themselves.
So Ragnar's trained. He's, first, I'll talk a little bit about Ragnar. Ragnar came from Amsterdam. He came from the Police Center for Dogs in Amsterdam. That's where he was named over there. We didn't change his name.
Did you have to teach him commands? Did he have to learn commands in Dutch first and then English? Or did you just go to English?
He's, he's trained in Dutch, yes. He didn't know anything. We were basically trained together. I've been training him through the process. So I was his first handler and the first one to teach him how to find drugs. So it's a pretty cool process for us both to learn together on. Here, you can see there's some overdoses from, I think we got these from the EMTs, from Debbie Carskallen. And she provided these. These are just within the, from April to November. If you read the little bullet point down there, the unknown ones. Narcan was used to resuscitate the individual, even though they don't, can't say exactly what that drug was. Narcan only works on opioids and opiates. So again, that'd go back to your fentanyl and your heroin, most likely there. So that was an interesting stat. And part of why we have Ragnar is because we want to keep people from dying and losing their lives. And if we can best keep these drugs out of our community, I think that's our first and best step.
Can you go back there for a second?
Yeah.
Can you explain other includes drugs such as, what does that mean?
So other includes those other drugs there that you can see. So LSD, marijuana, methadone, trazodone. So they, I don't think they want to just expand the graph out so long.
So that second bar from the right is all of the other ones.
Right. Just there was a question about whether, is the dog trained on being able to sniff marijuana?
No, he is not.
Okay.
No, he is trained on cocaine, heroin, and methamphetamine, China White and Black Tar heroin.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then actually, methadone and trazodone are also opioids. So here are some of Ragnar's stats. These are just little outdated. We've had a couple more run-ins with drugs since then. So he's doing very good. He's amazing. I can't speak more highly of him. He astonishes me every day, what he can do and what he recognizes. And he's, hasn't failed me.
I have a rookie question, if that's okay. So, and this is, this is probably a rabbit hole as far as the legal conversation goes. So like Ragnar's getting brought in, like during traffic stops? Or like, what, when are you able, like, is he out just like hanging out in the community? Like, when are you, if he's, if he's signaling you and you're just out doing your potty walk with him in the morning? Like, are you able, are we able to act and capture on that? Or like, how, when are we able to use Ragnar?
We don't use Ragnar for that. I am not taking him downtown for walks in order to find drugs or anything.
So as if there's...
All of these are from, all those deployments are from traffic stops.
Gotcha, okay. But he does get walks, right?
He does get, he gets lots of walks, yes.
So when somebody's doing a traffic stop, do they call you and you come in?
Yep. Yeah.
For every traffic stop?
Not for every traffic stop. It's up to the officer's discretion.
Okay. And when you're not on duty, does somebody else take him?
No, he's only with me. Ragnar's, oh, you talked about this.
Yeah, that's fine. So part of, of having a goofy, lovable lab is to be able to have him out in the community as much as we can, right? So Officer Newbill Safety Fair Ragnar was a part of. Ragnar had been in town for, I think, all of about 48 hours at this point. And as, as Corporal Snyder mentioned, he is, he's young. He's, he's just turned two years old in November. And he's still a puppy, and he was not socialized when he was being, being trained initially. So, you know, and then, and, and just combating some of the, you know, you want him to be inquisitive, you wanted him to do things. You don't, you don't really want to, he's jumping on everything. We want that to a degree. So this is, this is him at the, the Safety Fair. He's an incredibly lovable dog. As you can see, this photo, I believe, was featured in the spokesman review after National Night Out. Corporal Snyder and Officer Nunes went and gave a fentanyl presentation to the parents at the high school. Oh, here's the photo that was featured in the spokesman review.
He knows he's a celebrity.
He knows he's a celebrity. I love it.
So what would a presentation like that look like?
Were we talking about the?
The previous one? And then you, that, yeah.
High school here? This is directed towards parents and students that would like to come to attend these. This was a red ribbon presentation. I don't know if you're familiar with Red Ribbon Week. Basically combating drugs in schools and talking about the dangers associated with those drugs, and gives parents a little bit more insight onto what's happening in the street, what's happening to our specific community, and what we're seeing, and what they can look out for. That was my first time doing it. It was our first time doing it in a while, I think. And they asked us to come back, and we are gonna.
Keep coming.
Have an even better presentation next time, now that we kind of know what to expect and what they're looking for. So it went really well, and I, I think it's gonna get even better and better every year. Awesome.
All right, so it, and here's a video of Corporal Snyder and Ragnar train every day that they work. Works on obedient stuff with him every day at home. Here, we place, we place drugs in, in an area for him to go, I, I usually, or another officer goes and places the drugs so that they are hidden to both the dog and to Corporal Snyder. In this instance, they were in that little green.
Water thingy.
Water thing, shut-off thing there.
So that's an example of off-leash training. I'd like to show that one first, too, because obviously, when people want to look at the dog and have questions about how the dog's alerting and what, it's very, very obvious in that, that he's way out ahead of me, he's doing his own thing, and he's finding it all by himself on his own.
If we can replay it here.
And then also using someone else to hide those drugs is a great thing. And you can tell when he gets a, yeah.
You found it.
Here's another exercise.
You made that poor dog smell lockers.
Yeah. So, so that's part of the training, too, is exposing him to all sorts of different scents, right? And in the locker room, men's locker room, there are a ton.
I was gonna say, the hockey rink, I'm sure will be a good option, too.
Yes, and another good thing about this location is, it's kind of an awkward setup, right? It's not like a big open room where it's easy, we're getting tangled with the lead. He's, you see him jumping over, backing over the bench there. He's looking up, wondering where he needs to go next, and that's kind of where I come in, is where I'm directing him, where he needs to go, where he missed, and allow him to provide the scent.
Do you ever take him places like, like the high school, just to check lockers?
We have not, no.
Do you intend to?
I do not have any intention of doing anything that they don't want me to do. So that would be for the.
They'd be in high school?
That'd be for the school district to.
Retender schools?
To decide what they would like to do with Ragnar.
Yeah.
As we mentioned, we, he turned two in November, so they threw a little party for him for, after a training session there. And then, yeah, just an important note, he is a, a living creature. He does have bad days at work where he doesn't want to work, just like people sometimes.
Just watch cat videos.
And then just.
Two-year-old.
We've noticed, just with him switching to graves, too, he has the same problem switching to graves that humans do, so flipping his sleep schedule around. This was with, yeah, we had gotten a, a box of tennis balls from the university that they had donated to us. We didn't film the initial dumping out of the box, which was, he was, he was absolutely insane.
It's so hard to imagine, really.
He's never seen anything like that.
It's in heaven right there. Well, that, that's, that's all we have for you guys. If you guys have any other questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
You know, my only question is, and it might sound silly to folks, and that's fine, but are, are dogs sensitive to drugs in terms of if they touch it or smell the fentanyl? Does it affect them the same? Like, do you have to have Narcon for your dog? Or are they immune to it?
They are not immune to it. They can overdose on it, just like we can. So yes, so that is part of our training, is to, I don't put him in dangerous situations, right? Try to make it as safe for him as possible. I do have Narcan for him now.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, and to expand on that just a little bit, too, we did get some, we, we brought a vet in, and they, they kind of trained us on how to do some of that stuff. One of the things they talked about in, in regards to fentanyl overdoses by dogs is that they, they process Narcan at such a higher rate, we would have to give them a ton of Narcan, so it, to kind of go off his point, like, he's definitely not gonna put him in a position to where he's gonna be unsafe or, or harm the dog if, if we can avoid it, so.
Accidents happen. You're sniffing around for stuff and.
Absolutely.
Accidents happen, and that's why a lot of, like, our vehicles, you know, close doors during the exterior of the vehicle and that sort of thing.
Cool, thank you.
Yeah, of course.
I have two, but if you guys have.
Go for it.
I've been, so I've been seeing some ads, and I'm wondering if it's more led from the Idaho Department of Health and Welfare, but I'm seeing partnership conversations on campus about having Narcan on hand and things like that for students. And so I know your focus is Ragnar, and I don't know if, maybe that's a chief question, but are we, I see those small, I say small numbers, any number on that graph showing overdoses is still one too many. So I'm, it, it still makes me really sad and I worry, but I am glad to see some more visibility, at least for things like Narcan and things like that, on, like encouraging students to have it on campus and things like that. And so I don't know if you have, like, had questions about that, or if you're seeing any trend one way or the other as far as, like, usage going up or down as the seasons change or anything? Is it too big a question for you guys? I can, I can ask Chief later offline, but.
Usage as far as.
I mean, I was.
Gets an opioid.
Yeah.
We are still seeing a lot of fentanyl.
Okay.
Yes. A few years ago, I was, we were making arrests for Black Tar heroin. Came up all of a sudden, and it was here for a few years, and hardly ever seen any Black Tar heroin now, and vast majority is fentanyl. And a lot of times that will be found with methamphetamine or marijuana, so those other drugs, too.
Is it just the nature of where we're located geographically that we just, things are moving through the corridor? I mean, maybe I'm going too philosophical on these questions, but.
That's part of it, definitely. And we are definitely an area where stuff gets trafficked through our town. People have made stops. I've talked with people all the time where they, where they buy drugs and stuff like that. People stop and buy and keep going with larger amounts, too. But yes, fentanyl's coming through our town just as much, if not more than ever.
And my other question was, what do you need from us? Do you need, how is, how has the first year been? What do you need? How's it been? What's the pipe dream?
You know, I think just your continued support in the program, I, it's about as, as detailed as I can get right now. We're still trying to figure some things out, like, you guys approved it quite a while ago, but we were only operational August 1st after all the training and setup and stuff. So I think we're still in the, in, in the beginning stages of the program to be able to answer that question effectively.
I can give you my love and support. Done.
Thank you.
What tennis balls? Yeah, let us know.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, with that, we're at the end of our agenda, and I'm gonna do this part the easy way. Does anybody have anything to report?
No. I'll just do one.
Okay.
Because it happened, my, my, I went from, before our workshop, I had our four o'clock meeting for the, my last meeting for Farmers Market Commission, so.
You do have something.
I do have something to report. So we are, keep a lookout on the online tool that we use for our art submissions for the poster contest for.
Submitable?
Yes, our submittable on the city page, because we'll be rolling out the 2023 Farmers Market Poster Contest. That's what I got.[1781.21]